Food processors here who distribute food pretty much worldwide. We have honey producers and tofu producers and yogurt producers and grain producers. And with the climate that we have and the natural resources that we have as far as agricultural land, there's no reason for us to not spend a lot of time and energy developing food to be a source of export, a source of jobs in the Southern Lamont Valley. We're right on the verge of it and I'd like to compliment the Lane County Economic Department, which Glenn DePoeeling is at the helm of right now and doing a very good job of bringing things together. So I'm really excited about the future.
He isn't even over there yet and he's already working it.
(laughing).
I can do better than the alternative.[45.82][45.82](laughing).
And this, it was an offshoot of all food and I'm very interested in food.[53.12][53.12](laughing). On a regular basis.[55.12][55.12](laughing). As food is my life.[57.69][57.69](laughing). So it's, once again, we have a bright future. I believe lots of jobs on the horizon.
I'm interested in food.
Me too.[66.11][66.11](laughing).
This has turned to slapstick, so the food fight begins in 10 minutes. Thank you.
Daddy, you could have the chicken I didn't eat out there.
All duck.
Um, the duck? Yeah, I agree that we should, that's why we should protect our fine lands because food is important and our local food source is important. And we should protect the Amazon headwaters, which we still haven't done. I brought this clipping from the stormwater connection, which is about improving the water quality in the Lower Amazon, but we still haven't protected the Upper Amazon. And the water goes from there to the Lower Amazon, to Long Tom, to the Willamette. It affects, and it affects air and water. If we allow housing up there, it will be more pollution, more fertilizer, pesticides, more impervious surface. That part of the creek is already exceeds the TMDL. I think it is total maximum daily load. And it's, the temperature is already too high. So it's really important that we do something about that. It's been on the list for many years now. And I don't know how much money's left in the park thing, but some people who heard that we were thinking about using part of the park acquisition money for a skate park were pretty upset by that. And I've suggested, and some other people have said they think so too, that we could have a bond issue for park improvements if we include a skate park and if we include water features at other parks and things that people want in other parts of the city. I think people would vote for it because people really care about their parks. I went on a tour with Ron Kilcon, LTD, to see the housing on each side of Amazon, of West 11th, the housing on the other side of the Amazon Creek and where they're planning to build some bridges. And it was very interesting. I still haven't made up my mind what I think, but, and I think there's something else I was concerned about, but it's gone away, so I'll pass it on to Michael.
Okay, Mike.
Mike, either way, that's good. I just wanted to say-
You're also dignified today.
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to say how proud I was to go and attend Eugene Police Officers Awards Ceremony the other day. At a time when there are plenty of stories about people facing difficult things and making bad choices, it's kind of nice to spend an hour in the afternoon listening to people, listening to stories about people who've make amazing choices to help other people and put their own lives on the line in the process. Both officers and civilians that got awards for that as well. And to hear, you know, some stories of uncommon bravery and uncommon caring about the rest of the folks in our community. And so, it was just, I was really pleased to spend an hour that afternoon to do that and be amongst those fine folks. Say congratulations to those officers who got decades worth of service awards, as well as the ones with their commendations. Thank you.
George.
A couple of things. Wednesday at 5 o'clock, the mayor and I will be at Albertson's on Coburg Road for the one-on-one that the mayor has been doing. And then Thursday at 3 o'clock, Lieutenant Rex Barong is retiring and they're having a little ceremony for him in the council chambers. And I just want to personally thank Lieutenant Barong for all the years of service that he's given to our community. And I would give you a report on the Travel Lane County Board meeting, but since we had the joint elected officials meeting on the ambulance task force, I missed the meeting. But I think the main focus of the meeting was preparing the budget because there was talk of using some of the transit room tax for the county budget, but as it turned out, I think they received, the county received some legal advice on the use of that, so it, they didn't take any of the money that would have gone to Travel Lane County to promote tourism in our community, which is probably one of the biggest economic drivers right now in Lane County. So that was, I think, going to be the main focus of the topic. And other than that, we had a Northeast Neighborhood Association meeting, the second, I think it was, the second or third one, where they discussed some of the upcoming projects that are going on and some different developments that are happening within the area. It's, there's going to, you know, there's going to be a lot of activity in that north end, northeast end of town in the next couple of years. It's going to be exciting up there.
Chris.
Thanks. The only thing I would remind folks is we did have the JEO meeting last Thursday where we talked about ambulance services, and it was actually a very good meeting because we are really starting to have to confront some difficult situations regarding to funding, not just for our jurisdiction, but for all of them. And it's something we're really going to have to deal with. It's a very critical service. And so I appreciate it, all the work that was done to go into preparing that report. And I was pleased to see all the joint elected officials turning out for that meeting to talk about that issue.
Felt like some move forward, huh? Yep. Alan.
A couple items. On the way over here, I heard an interesting thing on NPR. It was, I think, called the, might have got this wrong, the Income Mobility Project did a study of, and kind of debunked the myth that we are economically mobile in this society in that, especially in comparison to other societies, we are less likely, if you're lower middle income, to move up in your income class than we are Western European countries and Canada, which surprised me because the mythology is that we have a lot of that mobility going around, but it's, a lot of countries do it better than we do. And I think that's something we should bear in mind and try to fix if we could. Tonight, after this meeting, I might leave a little early, but Fairmont Neighborhood's having a meeting at Laurel Hill, Laurel Wood Golf Course from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. Talk about the Olympics, the Olympic trials and how that's impacting the neighborhood. On Sunday, June 10th, at the library at 3:00 p.m. is a movie that's being shown called Bagit. It's about plastic bags. And again, that's Sunday, June 9th at the library, 3:00 p.m. It's free, so if anyone wants to go, they can join me there. I had Laurel Hill Valley Neighbors Meeting the other week, at the same time I had the Sustainability Commission meeting, so I managed to do a little bit of both and do a little tap dancing. And then, kind of a moment of pride, my wife, Suzie, got her Master Gardener's badge the other day, along with 85 other people who graduated from the class. Having watched it from a little bit of afar, it's quite a taxing and rigorous thing that they go through. And then they have to do a whole bunch of community service. So a friend of mine called it the badge ring, when you get your badge. But you get this little orange badge that signifies you're a master gardener. And I guess there are 785 of them that are lifetime members of, lifetime badges, which means they've donated more than 1,000 hours of volunteer time. And there's over 700 of those in this community. So gardening's kind of big in this community. And it's an ongoing thing, so if you're interested in doing that, please investigate it. It didn't, despite rumors, die when the LSU Extension Service went away. It's still really robust.
George Brown.
On Wednesday, I also attended the police award ceremony, along with the mayor and the city manager and councilors DePoeeling and Clark. It was a nice event. I agree with Councilor Clark, it was good to see people that are doing good things for our community. On Friday morning, along with the manager and the mayor and John Simpson from E-Web and a few other people, attended the groundbreaking ceremony for a stellar housing complex on City View. It's going to be, I cannot remember the exact numbers, but it's going to be housing, really nice units. It's a terrific development.
Fifty-something.
Fifty units. It's going to house about 150 people or 175 people, though. Four of the units are for homeless vets and their families. 10 of the units are for National Guard vets, are, you know, will be affordable housing for National Guard veterans and their families. And it's right next to, just north of 18th on City View. That's just going to be a wonderful project. And then on Friday, or Saturday morning, had a, attended a weed eradication party at Civic Stadium with the Civic Stadium folks. And that's always a good, a good event to attend. It actually doesn't look so bad. I mean, I think all of our efforts have been paying off and it doesn't look as bad as it did say a couple of years ago. I guess that's about it.
All right. City manager?
I remembered what else I wanted to talk about. City Hall. And as you know, John, I've been writing you emails, but we're vacating it before we know what's going to happen to it. I'm really concerned about that. I think if it's going to be rehabilitated or rebuilt or whatever, that we should start this year instead of a year or two from now. I think, and if we're not doing anything, if we haven't even decided anything and we're moving out, then I can see this being another ISO to take the place of the ones that have disappeared. And I hope that we will be hearing something about that very soon.
Well, there you go.
I won't be talking about City Hall tonight, but also in addition to Rex who's retiring, there's a couple of other people in the city organization that are retiring that have lots of years of service. So we're losing quite a bit of memory, historical memory in our organization this year. And folks have done great work. Rex Barong, of course, Linda Phelps, also in the police department, will be retiring. And she's done just a great job over the years in a variety of roles. Johnny Medlin is retiring here shortly. And so he also has provided, I think, 30-plus years of service to the community and through some really pretty neat times. Karen Brack, who is not retiring, but one of our assistant chiefs, as you know, is going to be, or has accepted a job back east as part of her professional career. And so kudos to her. Chief Groves, as mentioned on numerous occasions in his career, that of all the operations managers and chiefs that he's worked with, that she is the top that he's worked with. So she's done some great work there in the organization. So some others that are also on to new adventures.
I don't know how to feel about that.[791.00][791.00](laughing).
Good for her.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's nice for them. We have gaps to fill back in the organization and, you know, we have really talented staff, so we hope that there are people that are pretty competitive, that have the opportunity to also advance in their careers with that, too.
And I guess that's just another way of saying that we are proud to grow really good professional people and send them from here out to other places, in many ways representing the good work of our community as they take on their new jobs.
Yeah, and some do that. So that is a positive, too.
All righty, so let's move on to our work items of this evening. And the first one up is the Carmen Smith Relicensing Project.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll just turn over to Sue for a brief introduction, then over to Mike with E-Web to give us a little bit of a presentation.
So I'm going to be really brief. We're coming to talk about the Carmen Smith Relicensing today. This is a little bit different from what we would normally do, but we have a bond authorization approval on your consent calendar tonight. And since this is a rather large project with, you know, impact to the community, we thought you might be interested in just having the opportunity to see a little bit more about the project and be able to ask some questions. And you'll see us again at the 7:30 meeting. Mike McCann is the project manager, and so he's going to give the presentation.
Thank you. So good evening, Mayor Piercy and councilors. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight a little bit about the Carmen Smith Project. And as Sue pointed out, you're going to see it again tonight on the consent calendar for the regular board meeting, the regular meeting. So I'm Mike McCann. I'm E-Web's project manager for Carmen Smith Relicensing Project. I've been in this position since 2009, getting ready for implementation of the project, and we've been working towards that. And the Carmen Smith Project is E-Web's largest utility-owned generating resource. It's a hydroelectric project on the Upper McKenzie. It received its initial license in 1958 and was commissioned in 1963. And this picture that you're looking at is from the dedication in 1963. At that time, E-Web offered any citizen of Eugene who wanted a bus ride up to the project and a box lunch, free trip. And the keynote speaker at the dedication was Oregon Governor Mark Hatfield.
Can you do that again?
Unfortunately not. The, so the project went online in '63 and with the 50-year license issued in '58. That license expired in 2008. So in 2002, we started the process of relicensing the Carmen Smith facility. The relicensing process is very prescriptive. It's laid out in the Code of Federal Regulations. We followed that with an application in 2006. And immediately after signing the application and submitting it, we started settlement negotiations with a bunch of other parties, mostly state and federal resource agencies and NGOs and three Native American tribes. We submitted a settlement agreement as a supplement to our license in 2006, and we expect the new license to be issued for 50 years sometime soon. The end of 2012 would be perfect. Just in sort of this magnitude of the Carmen Smith Project, it provides about 15% of E-Web's generating needs. So it's about half of our own generation and about 15% of our total generation needs. That's roughly, on average, about enough power to power 16,000 homes. So here's the project. It is along the McKenzie Highway up just this side of Clear Lake. What happens is water flows over Sahalee and Cusaw Falls and it flows into Carmen Divergent Dam. And at that point, we put water through the power tunnel. We have a water right for the full flow of the McKenzie, and at this time, we take all of the water we can put in the tunnel. We don't have, don't currently have a water requirement to release water from the diversion dam, although under the new license, we will, for fish habitat. So there's a little bit of water that gets released from Carmen Divergent, usually when we have more water than goes in the tunnel, and so that spills over. And we store the water in Smith Dam until we need it to generate power. So we use Carmen to generate power when prices are high and demand is high, and that's usually from about 6:00 in the morning till 10:00 at night. So you wake up, you get up, turn on your lights, hop in the shower, and energy use in Eugene goes up. And so we generate power here during peak times, 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. At the end of the day, everyone goes to sleep and we turn off the project and store the water till the next day. Then what, there is other streams that flow into Trail Bridge, which is a re-regulating reservoir down there. And then also, if you've ever been to Blue Pool or Tamalich Falls, that hike goes along the McKenzie, that water all flows into Trail Bridge Dam. And then below Trail Bridge, we release water. That's our re-regulating reservoir, releases water 24/7, and that becomes the McKenzie River, as you know it, as it flows into McKenzie Bridge. So my project team and I have been asked to implement the new FERC license once we get it, consistent with the settlement agreement and E-Web's legacy statement, core values and policies. And that's what we've been working towards. The settlement parties that we worked with, here's a list of them. I mentioned there are a lot of state and federal agencies, three Native American tribes, and then a bunch of NGOs, including national NGOs like American Whitewater and local NGOs like Cascadia Wildlands and Oregon Wild and the McKenzie Flyfishers. So all these parties met almost weekly for a year and a half to craft this settlement agreement. And then when we submitted it to FERC, it kind of says what we want to do to protect the natural environment and still generate power at Carmen over the course of the next 50 years. The schedule we're on, like I mentioned, we're hoping to get the license late this year or early next year. We're planning for major construction to start in 2014. So since 2009, when I took over, we started design. We've been working on designs for fish ladders, fish screens and so on, rebuilding the powerhouses. And we did some smaller stuff, like we replaced a bridge, we replaced a whole bunch of power poles, and we're building some new facilities to help us with construction once we get going. But big construction's going to start in 2014 and hopefully be done somewhere around We looked at the economics, the social and the environmental impacts of the project. We did this at the time of the settlement agreement, but then recently, as part of an overall project evaluation, we looked at the TBL for the project. And what we want to point out is that Carmen Smith is very important to E-Web from a generating standpoint. It allows us to keep rates in Eugene as low as they are because we use it during peak power, when power prices are at their highest. That's when we generate. At the same time, through the improvements in the settlement agreement, we're going to be adding fish passage to help the aquatics and help the native fisheries. We're going to be moving a substation off of the river, off of the McKenzie River, and that will decrease the risk of oil contamination. We're going to be paying for a wildlife officer through the state police to improve the access to state patrols upriver. We're working with the Native American tribes to provide enhanced access for their elders to native plant sites. We're doing all kinds of things to help the social. And then on the economic side, I mentioned it's a good deal for E-Web. We're also going to be having, it's roughly about $150 million worth of construction on Upper McKenzie over the course of the next eight years, which is going to help the local So a couple of things that we're doing on the environmental side. Fish passage, I mentioned, fish protection and habitat enhancements, those all sort of go together, but let me show you the big ones. This is an aerial view of Trail Bridge Reservoir. Right now, you see that red line kind of in the lower left corner. That's as far as fish can get right now. When the project was put in in 1958, nobody had fish ladders at that time. And so in lieu of fish passage, E-Web put in a spawning channel. And so since that time, fish have gone up to the spawning channel and spawned, but that's as far as they go. As part of the settlement agreement and under the new license, we expect we're going to put in a fish ladder that will start just below a tail race barrier, which is that red line, and allow fish to travel up and into Trail Bridge Reservoir. That will provide them access to about five new miles of stream habitat. The fish species that we're most concerned about are spring Chinook salmon, which migrate through Portland and up over Willamette Falls and all the way up to Carmen Smith, and will now have access to the additional five miles of habitat. And native bull trout, which are a threatened species and live up there. And when we put in the project in '58, we split, we bifurcated the population of bull trout. So we have a population above and below the dam that they're now going to be able to intermingle and get back and forth. So biologists tell me it's all good stuff. Then we're going to be adding a fish screen. And the fish screen will collect both baby fish and adult fish and send them down through a pipe back into the river, so they don't have to go through the turbine. They can pass safely through a Kaplan turbine, which is what we have at Trail Bridge, but their chance of survival is much better by using this fish screen. It's going to be very similar to the fish screen that we have on our other projects on the McKenzie at Leiberg and Walterville, you might have seen those, except this one's going to be in the middle of a reservoir and it's going to float, like a floating dock. There is a much bigger version of this over on the Deschutes River at the Pelton Roundby Project that PGE owns. We're going to have a smaller version, but it's going to be in our reservoir and float up and down. We're also going to do a whole bunch of non-aquatic measures, environmental measures for, well, for recreation, vegetation, wildlife and historic and cultural resources primarily. The big ticket items are the fish passage, fish ladder and fish screen, but on the recreation side, we're going to rebuild the project campgrounds. We have three campgrounds up there. When we surveyed the users during the relicensing, we found that 50% of the users of those campgrounds are from the Eugene-Springfield area. And so we know that local citizens will use those. We're going to rebuild the existing day-use areas and add a new day-use area with picnicking. One of the other things we found is that people are starting to recreate more closely to home, probably because of economics, and we're going to try to meet that need by adding to our facilities. We're going to add fishing and boating access and then build a visitor's center, because this project has been called E-Web's crown jewel, and it doesn't have any sort of visitor's center associated with it. People don't know that it's an E-Web facility, and so we're going to add to that. So a little bit about project economics. When we got into this, we thought, all right, well, we have a license, we're going to rebuild the project, get a new license to operate for the next 50 years. And shortly after we submitted the settlement agreement to FERC, the economy collapsed and power prices decreased substantially to areas where they currently still remain. And so we've been looking at the project, does the project still make sense? And we compared it to, in this scenario, the relicensing, which is on the left, and decommissioning scenario, which is on the right. Under the decommissioning scenario, we would run the project for the next 10 years without any improvements to pay for its decommissioning. We would then remove the project and replace it with a gas-fired peaking plant. And the gas plant would be sized to replace the power generated by Carmen Smith. And so those are the two scenarios we looked at. And we did so looking at an expected carbon cost scenario. So we're assuming that there's a carbon tax, and this is the same carbon, expected carbon cost that we used in E-Web's IERP that was recently completed. And what you'll see is that there is a benefit to continuing with relicensing as proposed of a roughly $263 million, and that's over the 50-year license, length of the license. So the project still makes sense and we plan on still going forward. And that's just a picture of the Carmen Plant looking down towards Trail Bridge Reservoir. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I'm curious about all the groups that you brought together to work on the agreement. Did they all come to agreement on what you came to?
Yes. Yeah, we, in fact, I think it was somewhat unique in that we invited any party who wanted to be part of the group to come join us. And the group stayed together through the entire negotiations, and all 17 parties, you have and 16 others, signed the settlement agreement at the time it was signed. So yes, and they're still all working with us.
That's great. And did you, in any time when you were talking about the dam, did you talk about the effect of a potential climate impact on the production?
We did. We paid, as part of the project, we paid a researcher from OSU to study climate impacts on the Upper McKenzie. And we needed to see, basically, the water is our fuel, and so we wanted to make sure that enough water was still going to be coming out. And his research showed that we are very lucky to be living on or near the McKenzie River. The McKenzie River will continue to flow, should continue to flow cold for the foreseeable future. Yes, there will be some changes. We're not sure exactly what they'll look like, but Carmen Smith will still be profitable and still be an important part of our utility under any climate scenario.
Appreciate that information. Thank you. Betty.
Just one question. What's the cost of the visitor's center?
We don't know yet. We have penciled in roughly $250,000 at this point. On our cost estimating for the recreation facilities, we have a large number for Trail Bridge Campground, which is the main campground, of roughly $2.5 million to rebuild that campground completely. And $250,000 of that is for a visitor's center.
Thank you. I've got George Brown and then George Polling and Alan. George Brown.
Do you have, I'm just wondering, this bond measure is $45 million. It's just the first one. There'll be another one to complete the project in a few years. Do you have a rough idea of, can you give us a kind of a rough breakdown of how much is going to go for power generation, for actual physical repairs to the plant, and how much is going to go for the fish ladder and the enhancement of habitat, and how much is going to go for the campgrounds?
Sure, yeah. So right now, our estimate for the entire project is $155 million. Of that, about $10 million is for recreation and other, say, social sort of parts of the project. There's some new homes, a new water system for the project up there. So you take the remaining $145 million and roughly split it in half. So doing the math, what, $72 million roughly for power generation improvements and the other 72 for aquatic habitat improvements and fish ladder. Fish ladder, fish screen are the big elements. On the power generation side, the big issue is at the Carmen Plant, which is in the picture, the turbine runners have to be replaced. And so that's roughly $35 million just for the turbine runners and rewinding the generator. So that's a big chunk of it. The rest of it is replacing the ancillary systems that go with power generation. So $10 million roughly for a new substation, pumps, motors, controls, all that sort of stuff. This plant was built in 1960 roughly, and lots changed in control technology since then. So we're going to be updating the plant. On the aquatic side, the $70 million there, roughly, I think, $12 million for a fish ladder, roughly $40 million for a fish screen, and the rest of it, the bulk of it is, the remaining, is for habitat work.
Okay. And then there was just a way that this was presented in our AIS that I didn't understand. So I just- so I just read a couple things and tell me what it means. On page six, under License Implementation Preparation, about halfway down that first paragraph, it says, "Construction Manager, General Contractor, to assist with the design and construction of the project, CH2MHA recently completed the 60% design development." And then on the next page, there's mention of preliminary design, 30% design for fish passage work, and conceptual design, 15% design for power generation facilities. What do those percentages mean?
That's just a percent of complete. So when something is considered 100% complete in the design, then you can give it to your contractor to go build.
Okay.
In engineering terms, if you, conceptual design is typically thought of somewhere around 15% design, so that's a, I have a concept, and then the next thing you do is you develop it to preliminary design. So you have maybe the rough outline of what it's looking like, and that would be 30%. Then 60% is sort of design development, you're almost close, and then the next step you would do is a 90% design, which is considered a final design, and then you do final fix-ups. So that's just telling you where we are with the various pieces in the design stage.
Well, I had an idea, it might be something like that, but I wasn't sure. Thank you.
Yeah.
Are you through, George?
I'm done.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so George Pullman.
I may have missed it, but what is an IERP?
Integrated Electric Resource Plan.
Okay, all right.
Energy.
I figured it was something like that. In one of your slides, it said that you were closing some of the recreational sites, and then later on, it says recreation improvements.
Yep.
Rebuild project campgrounds. Is it just recreational sites immediately surrounding the two reservoirs?
Yeah, there are three project campgrounds, three campgrounds that were built as part of the original project in early '60s. One is, there's one at each reservoir, basically. And none of them have been upgraded since. And so we are going to upgrade one of them before we start the main part of construction, so that people have a nice new campground to go to. And then we're going to close Trail Bridge Campground, because we're going to lower the level of Trail Bridge Reservoir to do construction, and so it won't really be accessible. So we'll close that, we'll use it as a construction camp, and then once we're done with construction, we'll rebuild it completely. Right now, it doesn't have any facilities for RVs or motorhomes. It has limited sort of drive-in sites, most of them are haul your stuff to a tent site kind of place. And so we're going to redo the entire campground and then reopen it when we're done, and so that when public see it for the next time, it'll be completely new.
So in the day-use areas, it's going to be kind of a staggered opening and closing of all the facilities up there?
That's correct.
And is it going to be pretty well-publicized, not only ahead of time, but when these closures and reopenings are going to occur?
We've got some signs up already, and the, I didn't mention this, but the entire project sits on national forest land, and so we're working with the National Forest, the Forest Service and the Mackenzie River Ranger District to get information out to the public also. So they'll have handouts and maps.
Great. Well, you know, I appreciate the broad spectrum of folks, the parties that you involved in the discussions on this, and also the fact that this project is not just about building a new power generation plant, but you're taking in, you know, the fish, the habitat and everything else. I think it's a great, a great approach to how to go at rebuilding this. Thank you.
Alan?
Yeah, I too would like to applaud your work and efforts to work with all the different groups and to achieve consensus. That's very laudable, and it doesn't always happen. Took a while, but I think it's worth it in the end, and I'm happy to see all of the different groups signing on to the agreement, and I think it's a worthy agreement. Most of my questions were already asked, I have a couple of other ones. So the fish ladder that goes, the fish screens, the fish ladder that goes in, what's the percentage that it increases the survival of the fish?
We don't really know. What we know, and first of all, I'm a chemical engineer and I'm not a biologist at all, so I trust my biologist to tell me. But what the biologists say is, for Chinook salmon, right now, they have access to the spawning channel that I mentioned that was originally built, and we've seen numbers of fish in the spawning channel since the early '60s fluctuate between roughly 100 fish down to a low of 6 fish a couple of times. And lately, it's been around 100 to 120, so it's pretty good. They think our population up there is going to double by the opening of the fish ladder. It's just the habitat is, you know, to me, it's like five miles of habitat, is it really that good? And it is. And it's good, high-quality habitat, it's in the Upper Mackenzie, it's really clear, very clear, very cold water, and they'll do really well. So we think the Chinook salmon are going to really thrive. With the bull trout, they'll be able to go up and down the ladder, and that population, Mackenzie River bull trout, is supposedly one of the best bull trout populations anyplace. And ODFW is using fish from the Mackenzie to restock the middle fork with bull trout, is my understanding, and this will just enhance the recovery of that fish. So everything I've heard is that it's really good stuff for the fish.
And meet long-lost relatives.
Yes, exactly.
And then the mayor asked my question about the water levels. Can you give a little bit more detail about that? And what was the carbon tax rate in dollars per metric ton that you were using?
I'm going to have to ask for help on that one.
They're behind you.
What was the carbon tax?
The carbon tax.
Hold on a second.
The expected carbon tax that we included in the financial analysis started in about five years and started with about $2 on a metric ton, and then increased over the next additional five years up to about $10. It starts low and increases slowly. It may present itself in form of a carbon tax or cap and trade, or any other method.
Right. The cap and trade systems in California are expected to start in that $10 to $15 range in 2013, which is substantially more than what you guys are doing. So that just makes this project that much better, because it is a carbon-free resource that we're.
That's correct.
To be having, to maintain for the next 50 years.
And I apologize, what was your question about the water levels?
So what was, what were some of the details around the shifts that occur and the amount of water that occurs on the Mackenzie because of climate change?
Yeah.
I know we get a shift because of the runoff.
So the way that it's been explained to us is, the Mackenzie River is sort of the dividing line. When the Mackenzie River goes by Belton F Springs and starts aligning north-south, so from Clear Lake down to Belton F Springs, on the east side of that is sort of high cascades, very porous lava. The west of it is weathered old cascades and sort of surface-dominated. On the east side is subsurface-dominated, spring-fed, spring-dominated, and it doesn't really matter at that point whether the precipitation falls as rain or snow. It seems like it goes into this lava sponge that we call it, and then it gets split out at these great springs, Great Spring and Clear Lake, at Tamalich Falls, at some other sites along the river there. So what you found is that the snow line will go up, so we will have more precipitation that falls as rain rather than snow. It will still go into the lava sponge. The timing of the rain may be more shifted towards, into the winter, so drier springs, but the overall volume of precipitation that falls, he didn't think was going to change all that much. It's all a bit speculation, you know, but overall, he felt like the overall precipitation in the Upper Mackenzie Valley wasn't going to change all that much, and because the way the system runs with springs, that it's the head, it's the pressure in the lava that pushes the water out through the springs. So as long as we get as much, enough precipitation, it's going to maintain the pressure, and the amount of water coming out of the spring should be fairly constant.
Interesting.
So it seemed like we were going to be okay. One of the places where it's going to impact us is the snow melt, which we get a lot of water from snow melt when the snow, high cascades does melt, that timing is going to shift. So typically now, we get too much water, we call it too much water, we spill water at Carmen diversion from mid-May to mid-June. That may shift a month earlier. And so if you're running the Mackenzie River on your raft, you'd probably, instead of waiting, you know, right now, it gets to be August and it gets to be too dry, too bony, it's probably going to be in July when that happens. So, anyway.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I was, almost, well, I think it was a year ago, almost this exact time, when I had the chance to tour Carmen Smith.
Oh, yeah, right.
It was last year. And it was an amazing opportunity to really learn about the facility. I learned a great deal about how important it is to the community as well. So I'm happy to see this project going ahead as it is, and I'm happy to support it. It was really impressive, the tour down there. What's, one of the most amazing things to me is these gigantic turbine cores that were put up there in the late '50s, or the, yeah, I mean, and the high elevation that that is and the level of mechanical sophistication that was required to get those, get them straight up and down, get them to spin right, everything involved and all the engineering really had to be pretty amazing.
Yeah.
It's a wonderful facility.
Thank you.
Yeah?
You know, I have nothing much to say beyond to reiterate the compliments you've already received. Very, very good presentation. I happened to spend the weekend up there, this last weekend. It was mainly the Saheli Falls loop, which is just a, if you've not been there, man, that is tremendous. It's hard to believe that that is so close to our home. But I had a chance to talk to a couple of people about the project and about the relicensing and the improvements that are being made. And universally, it's not just accepted, it's lauded by fishermen, by conservationists, by pretty much everybody that I spoke to about it. It's pretty amazingly devised and followed through on. And I guess one compliment I'd like to add is that no matter what questions you were asked today, you had the answer, or the answer was immediately sitting right behind you.
Oh, much.
It's much greater detail than anyone could even hope for. So it's very impressive, just the entire job, and I expect that the culmination of the project, we'll all be able to stand back for the next 50 years and enjoy your work. The only thing I would like to state is that the Saheli Falls loop is up above the Carmen Reservoir, and I suspect that that's not even going to be even slightly affected by any of the project or the engineering or the construction.
Yeah, that's correct, but you probably walked over our new bridge, so.
I did.
Yeah, so that's actually part of our project, so we did complete that bridge. We are going to, right on the west side of the bridge, we're going to be adding a new day-use area, and so that is part of it, but it's not part of the big construction.
That's right, in the big, broad gravel expanse there.
Yeah, people have been using it as a day-use area for years, and so we thought, let's give them some facilities.
Yeah, it's kind of all gravelly now, so you're going to add a little bit of landscaping in there.
Landscaping, some picnic tables, other things like that, yeah.
It's a wonderful environment, nice setting, and to confirm the fact that you, what you said, the Mackenzie River is clear and it is cold.
Chris?
Thank you. I just add my voice to everything that's been said. I really appreciate the presentation, I think it's very thorough, very complete. Council Ortiz and I had the opportunity to get a Forest Service tour of that area up there a few years back, and they took us to the Mackenzie Bridge Ranger Station, where they have that huge tabletop diorama, and it was very helpful, because they could point out the geological features in that area, and they talked a lot about the absorbency of the volcanic area in there, which is why you don't have a lot of streams and trail, streams and creeks up there. But that really confirms what they were saying in terms of the water going through that porous rock and then coming out, and I thought that was very interesting. The other thing I'd mention is, I was just reading a story not too long ago about, they're beginning to determine why fish suffer fatalities going through turbines. New information shows that their pressure changes are influencing their swim ladders. And so they're designing new turbine systems to, it's not the rough passage, it's the air pressure change, and so I'm wondering the degree to which that will be accommodated in the design of the facility.
Well, so what we're hoping to do with the fish screen, we should be able to screen out all fish, so no fish will go through.
So no fish will go through.
Yeah. We, it's called 100% exclusion screen, so it is, literally, the screen is like, well, it's a little bigger than your screen door, but essentially, all water going through the turbine has to pass through the screen, and all fish are excluded, so we should have no fish.
Great, thank you.
The pressure's off.
Pressure's off, yeah. It's a great project.
It's an exclusion zone.
So what did the fish say when he hit the dam?
Ouch.
Damn. So how many?
How many? Fish with no eyes?
How many campsites are there now, and how many will there be?
At Ice Cap Creek Campground, which is the uppermost one by Carmen diversion reservoir, there's something like 22, and it's going to remain small, so that it'd probably be about the same number. The other one is, the next one is, it's called Lakes End Campground, and it's at the head end of Smith Reservoir. It is a boat-in-only campground, it is a sweet spot to go.
Really cool.
It's very rustic, it's going to remain very rustic, and probably about 20 sites also there. The big facility, Trail Bridge Campground, the original design had similar number, I think it was a little bit higher, maybe the upper 20s, and those rarely get used, because what's happened is the RVs have taken over the day-use area. So we're going to separate the day-use area from the camping area, create some RV spots. I can't tell you how many we're going to wind up with, but the idea is probably somewhere in the 20s. So a total of 60, so.
I'm going to wrap this up and thank you again, it was a great presentation, and just say, as I was listening to you say that you checked to see how many people were from our area and that you were serving people from our area, but I would look at George and say, we're interested in serving people from other areas too. This is, what you're doing is going to serve our tourism industry too, so I think it works in both ways and is important to us in both ways.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Mike.
Tell your joke, that was a better than his joke.
It was his joke.
To move on to the second work session, which is the Jefferson Acres Road Improvement Project. If we keep going the way that we've been going in the past few weeks, this must be the Pullman Project, so.
Wait until you're ready.
Okay. Thank you. We're ready for you.
Ready, okay, good. Good evening, Mayor Piercy and members of the council. I'm going to talk about the Jefferson Acres Road Improvement Project, and before I start, I'd like to recognize Patrick Cox, our project manager, is here tonight, and Lindsay Seltzer from Transportation Planning, and also Eric Jones from Public Affairs. They've all been instrumental in the public process to date on this project. I'm going to give you an outline of what I wanted to talk about tonight. I'll give you a little of the project history through the capital improvement program, some of the recent assessment project history, the public process that we've gone through on this particular project, a design report which is prescribed by the Eugene Code, a design exception that requires council action, remonstrances, which is a little bit premature, but I think is important, premature in that we usually talk about those at the formation of a local improvement district, which, if we proceed, is about a year away, but it's an important issue. And then the options available to the council, again, those are prescribed by code, and then the city manager's recommendation. So the history of the project, it's one of the projects identified in Transplan as a improvement of a neighborhood collector to urban standards. It's been in four capital improvement programs, and it's most recently in the capital improvement program for 2012, 2017. And at that point, there's a lot of interest by the council and by the citizens to move that project forward, because it had been in the capital improvement program for numerous years, and it always kind of been right outside the two-year funding window of the capital improvement program. So in 2000, the program that was adopted for 2012 and to 17, it moved forward and then was adopted, funded in the fiscal year 12 annual budget. Some of our recent assessment projects that almost all of you are familiar with are Crest Friendly and Story. We had design exceptions with that project in that we only had a sidewalk on one side of the street. We had over 50% of the property owners remonstrate against that project, which required six members of the council to direct us to, or approve that project going forward. And assessments for single-family homes ranged from $1,100 to $13,200, and those on the low end were those properties that received a low-income subsidy. Maple Amira, we had design exceptions in that the sidewalks were curbside rather than set-back. We didn't have more than 50% remonstrance, and the assessments ranged from $900 to $12,000, again, for single-family homes, and the lower end were those that received a 5-6 subsidy. And then finally, Old Coburg Road was less than 50% remonstrance, and there's only a couple of single-family homes, most of it was zoned other than residential, and assessments from $1,500 to $12,600, again, for the low-income subsidies. And so those were all constructed in the summer of 2009 with assessments being made in 2010. And then subsequent to that, that last project being assessed, which was the Crest Project, the council formed a subcommittee that worked in 2009 and 2010, and the charge of that subcommittee was to review the existing code on assessments and the inequities in the code identified by the city council, and develop recommended changes in the code for consideration by the council. So those recommendations came back to the city council in September of 2010, and then in December of that year, an ordinance was adopted that amended the code, and it had an effective date per the city charter, six months later of June 2011. And the Jefferson Acres Road Improvement Project is the first project, the first assessment project under that. project under that new code. So the public process we use to date with this project has been a series of meetings and a neighborhood walkabout. So the first meeting was really to talk about the goals and objectives, and it was in January of this year, of the public process, and then inform the residents of the, kind of the life history of a street improvement project from being identified in Transplan, working its way into the six-year CIP, and then the capital budget through design and construction, and finally, the levying of assessments. And also talk about the functional classification of the street as a neighborhood collector, and then finally, talk about some of the design components, both for things like sidewalks in the street as well as traffic calming. The walkabout that was held in February is really a way for staff in the neighborhood to see conditions on the ground and to learn of particular concerns or problems that people view with the street and what their values are about that street and their neighborhood. The second meeting in March was really to talk about the assessment process, how that works, how assessments can be financed through the city, low-income subsidy, that sort of thing. And then also four different design options that, based upon the design standards for neighborhood collector streets. And then our final meeting, a week ago, was really to talk about the design report that's prescribed by the city code and what was going to be presented tonight, and also what we believed was the option, the design option that best met what we had heard in the previous public meetings and the walkabout. And so then if, we're certainly not done with the design, so if the direction tonight is to continue, we'll work with, continue to work with the residents along that street on traffic calming, which is an important aspect of the project, and parking. We haven't really resolved the amount and type of parking on the street, and then more discussion about the sidewalks. So one of the items that's required in the design report is a map that shows the properties that would be included in a local improvement district. So that's the bold line on both sides of Jefferson Acres Road between Gillum on the left and just shy of Providence on the right. And that length of Jefferson is 1,700 feet. The right-of-way width is, varies between 50 and 60 feet. There are 48 properties within that boundary. Nine of those properties, when they developed, the owner signed an irrevocable petition that basically says, rather than doing any improvements at the time of development, they signed a document that says, I agree to participate in a future local improvement district for those improvements. Three properties have paid prepaid equivalent assessments, so they've paid for what at the time we thought was going to be the cost to improve the street. So they developed and paid that prepaid equivalent assessment. And so if the project goes forward, they wouldn't, we would use those funds to pay their share and not, and they wouldn't be assessed. The zoning is residential for the, the zoning and the use is the same for all of the properties. Again, the functional classification is a neighborhood collector. The existing pavement's about 20 feet wide, and there's streetlights. And within your council packet is a list of all of the accessible properties and their owners, and that's another.
Mike, for the benefit of the audience, would you, I know you've said this many times, but it seems like we need to tell people what a collector is and how that's different than other kinds of streets.
Okay. Well, the functional classifications goes from local street to neighborhood collector, major collector, minor arterial and arterial. And the objective of a neighborhood collector is to essentially collect the traffic from the neighborhood and bring it out to the streets of higher functional classification. So in this case, it would be, the traffic on Jefferson Acres would move out to Gillum Road or down to Coburg Road to the east. And Coburg, it must be, I'm not positive, must be a minor arterial or a major arterial. And Gillum must be a major collector.
Thank you.
Okay. So the concept design that we came up with was two travel lanes, each 10 feet wide, traffic calming, which again is something that we still need to work with the neighborhood on what that looks like and with internal stakeholders such as the fire department, two five-foot sidewalks, one on each side of the street, set-back, rain gardens, which is that little green strip on the right to treat stormwater, street trees, and parking bays. So rather than having a strip of parking from one end to the other, it would have bays that would be cut in similar to on Broadway, for example. And again, that, we still, we still need to work more with the neighborhood to get a better sense of how much and where the parking would be. Another aspect of the design report is, that's required by the code, is the estimated cost. So at this point, the total project cost is estimated at 1.27 million. 770,000 of that would be assessable, and 500,000 would be city cost, and estimated assessments are around $16,000. And that's before any low-income subsidy. So properties that qualify for a low-income subsidy, if they're single-family owner-occupied residential properties, they could receive anywhere from a 1/3 to a 5-6 subsidy of the assessment.
Was 16,000 the average?
Well, if you recall, the, one of the changes in the assessment code was to establish an equivalent assessment unit for residential properties. So all 48 of those properties would pay the same, would pay 48,000, excuse me, 16,000. And then the low-income subsidy would be applied to that for those that qualified. So the design standards that we have for neighborhood collectors call out for set-back sidewalks on both sides of the street. And the design exceptions that we have available to us are focused on, all of them, all, six of them are focused on objective technical criteria such as, is there sufficient right-of-way? Are there wetlands? Is the topography such that sidewalks wouldn't be workable on one or both sides of the street? There's a seventh exception that is more policy-based, and it's if we've done a public process and there's not support for a particular design, then the council can make a design exception, provided that the city engineer determines that it's both safe and functional. And that, if you recall, that's the, that exception was created when we did the River Avenue project years ago, and we ended up working a second time with the property owners to do some exceptions that met their needs, that didn't quite meet the needs of the, our design standards. So again, remonstrances are typically submitted and considered by a hearings official at the time of the public hearing before a look, a council resolution on to form a local improvement district. So we're, we're a year away from that point in time, but there's a lot of interest in this project, and as you can see from this slide, a lot of objections. So I, in your handout, I updated that, I think, from '26 to '27. So we have, out of 48 properties, there are 27 valid remonstrances, which means that the project, if we go forward and come back to you a year from now to form a local improvement district, it will take six affirmative votes from the city council to move that project forward. We also have letters of objection from four people that have signed irrevocable petitions in the past and from three renters. So there's sufficient or substantial objections to the project. And a lot of it has to do with the cost of the individual assessments, and then also some issues on the design, in particular about having sidewalks on both sides of the So the council options, and again, these are prescribed by code, are either to direct us to complete the design and call for bids, modify the improvements, and direct us to complete the project and call for bids, request additional information, excuse me, or decide not to make the improvement. And so the recommendation is really using that design exception criteria is to direct us to modify the improvement, to remove the set-back sidewalk on the north side, and then move forward with the project for preparing plans and specifications and calling for bids. And prior to doing that, we would continue to work with the neighborhood associate, or the residents on the street, those that would be assessed, to sort out the issues around the amount and type of parking, the location of the sidewalk in relation to parking bays that may be desired, and then the traffic calming element of it and what that might be. So with that, I'll stop and entertain any questions.
Hi, George, I've got you in the queue. I know it's characteristic, actually, that once people see assessments, they aren't happy to see them. So I know that generally happens. My biggest concern, honestly, is that we learn from the experiences we've had before and that, I know each project is different, and so I'm doing sort of apples and oranges in a way. But I just want to be sure when we think this one through, that we kind of have a picture in our minds of what the real result is going to be, so that when it's done, we don't say, that doesn't really work out the way we thought it was going to work out, and it feels dangerous or something of that sort. So I just want to be sure we really are careful about what it is we end up with when we get it all done, whether it's pleasing to everybody or not. That's about as careful as I can say that. But I think we all know what I mean by that. I'm just very concerned that we don't, you know, it's always kind of a struggle to get through trying to please everybody, to come up with the very best project that you can, to do the very best job you can. But in the end, you want to do something that not, that just serves everybody the best and that you will want to live with for generations to come. So it's, it's like we need to be really learning from what came before. George, Paulie, and then Mike.
Okay. As some of you probably received the emails, some of the emails that I forwarded on to you from the, over the last week or so. I received about a dozen of them from people living on Jefferson Acres, from different households. Two of them, I don't know if they were the renters or not because they didn't show up on the list of property owners, so those I couldn't tell. But all these folks were opposed to this project. Some of them were just adamantly opposed, some were opposed, but if it were to go through, at least let's look at some modifications such as the sidewalk on one side. I think parking bays or cutouts were mentioned, and also some sort of traffic calming, whether they be speed bumps or whatever. So, you know, I responded to some of them, but then they just started coming in one after the other, so I didn't respond any further. When I first came on the council in 2003, this was one of the first things that was brought to my attention by somebody that was paying attention, actually, to the Transplan, said, why does this keep getting bumped back? So I took the charge to kind of keep it up at the front of the list, and now that it's there, I'm kind of in a situation where I'm.
Careful what you wish for.
Yeah. But what I've been telling people is that if a majority of the folks don't want this project to go through, I am going to support their will and suggest that we don't go forward with this. And to me, right now, we've got 27 valid remonstrances. That's, as Mike pointed out, that's almost 60% right now. And I would hate to see us actually move any farther with this project and spend time and money on it if we come down at the end of the year, or whatever it is, and we've spent all this money and we still have that same number. So I'm real uncomfortable with moving it forward, but, you know, that's my opinion. That's what I'm doing, basically, what I'm hearing from the people in the neighborhood. I'm all for improving the conditions of our unimproved streets. However, I'm afraid that this is going to turn this part of Jefferson Acres Road, which is a nice community or a nice little neighborhood, into another Arcadia or another Minda Drive, where you're going to have people using it not as a collector, but as a pass-through to get from Gillum to Coburg Road. Arcadia, it's Harlow to Willikenzie. Minda, it's Gillum to Norkenzie. I can't support moving this project forward based on what I'm hearing from the people at this point.
Hey, and I've got Mike and then Alan.
Thank you, Mayor. I, it's interesting, Gillum, as it runs north and south, is the dividing line between four and five. And so Jefferson Acres, as it runs east and west, is in four. But if you stand on the corner of Gillum and Jefferson Acres, you could see my house. So this is really close to my neighborhood. I have asked for, a number of times, and I know that the staff's been working on this for quite a while now, for us to have a more comprehensive plan for our roads that don't, that aren't up to a city standard, for our, why is the word escaping me now? Unimproved road network. Because for a long time, we did, you know, for the reasons that we did, we would bring county roads into the city limits, and for good reason, and at the time, for a good cause, and, you know, for various lists of reasons, we did that. I'd like to see us not only have a comprehensive sort of plan for how we're going to deal with the unimproved street network we have, but maybe some policy discussion around how we deal with bringing in roads that aren't up to an urban standard when they, when we bring them in in the first place, or at least some plan to get them there so that we don't have this reoccurring problem over time. But to kind of, you know, in a, I know this has been on Transplan for a very large number of years, but to deal with it in an isolated circumstance from all the other unimproved streets in town, rather than to have a more, a more homogenized plan for how we're going to deal with all of them, I think, is not, is not fair to the folks that live there either. So I'm not sure I can support it either, especially with the large number of remonstrances that have already been received. I've got a history of trying to listen to that, and I voted once, as I recall, on something a lot like that. When the folks say they don't want it, I can't see forcing it on them, so.
Alan.
So the normal design standard for this type of street, a neighborhood collector, is to have set-back sidewalks on both sides?
That's correct.
So why was this design exception changed? To lower the cost or for other reasons?
Well, that's a good question, and I intended to cover that. So it's similar to Almyra, where we, instead of removing one of the sidewalks, we made them curbside. Is that both roads were developed with relatively wide right-of-way, 50 to 60 feet, but people built their homes close to the edge of the right-of-way because the pavement was only 20 feet wide. So the, the impact of having a new street, same with 20 feet, but then set-back sidewalks is, it really encroaches into, into, or it places a sidewalk and pedestrians closer to their front door. So it negatively impacts kind of the character of their homes in that street. And so that's the, that's the, really the reason behind proposing a design exception is to balance that need for pedestrians with the need to try to maintain the character of the homes along that street.
So, so the remonstrances, 27 of them so far, can you characterize those? George kind of tried to characterize them, but some of them are no under any circumstances and some are yes, under certain circumstances? And secondly, the four irrevocable petitions? You said that they paid prepaid a development fee?
Two different kinds. You know, there's, all told, there are nine properties with irrevocable petitions, three additional properties that don't have irrevocable petitions but have already prepaid. And then there's 27 properties that have submitted letters of objection. So I would characterize it as, some of those are opposed to the project regardless, and I wouldn't be as optimistic as you. I'd say some of them are, aren't as opposed as vehemently as the others.
But still opposed.
Still opposed.
So if they had a chance, they would know.
I don't know that, right. I don't know that, I don't think we'll be, a year, if we go forward, I don't think we'll be a year from now with less remonstrances. Some people may change their mind, but others, others of that 48 that don't have Some people may change their mind, but others, others of that 48 that don't have irrevocable petitions may submit a letter of objection. So I think a year from now, you'll be faced with the decision of whether there's six votes to move forward.
And the three that prepaid, what, if we don't move forward, what happens to that, to them? Do they get refunded?
Well, no, to me, as long as the, as long as we continue to carry the project in our transportation system plan, trans plan, then it's still a viable project at some point in the future.
Oh, why would we keep it in the trans plan if we reject it at this point?
Well, because, well, as Councilor Clark proposed, there may, we may be funding street improvements in a different way. It doesn't...
So the formula would change and it'd still be in the queue?
Right.
I don't see that happening. We can't even deal with our existing streets much less our unimproved streets. But, okay, thanks.
George Brown, and then Chris.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to go back to the idea of just putting in one sidewalk again. You kind of explained the rationale, but is there a, was this at a suggestion of some of the property owners?
Yes, yes. Yeah, some of the input during the public process that we heard from many more, or many property owners.
And, and I guess the second part of that question is, why do we remove it on the north side but not the, why would you pick the south side?
Well, again, that was part of the, the public input and also because there's an access to Sheldon High School on the south side of the street. So there's one lot that's owned by the school district.
I noticed that, yeah.
And it provides access to Sheldon, so, so people wouldn't be crossing mid-block to get to that access.
And, you know, it's been a while since I've been on that road, and so I don't know what the condition's like. I think back to Crest story friendly. The neighbors wanted the roads repaired. They weren't happy with the assessments or, and then some of them not so happy with the ultimate design, the way it played out, but they wanted them repaired. Of course, some of them were really hilly and they were actually getting, getting dangerous, you know, on a rainy, stormy day, it was kind of tricky to negotiate some of those curves on the steep hill, so I would say there, most of the neighbors did want them repaired. A lot of them didn't want to pay for it, but they wanted them repaired. How bad, what is the condition of the street? Is it approaching, you know, like it was, say, on Crest Drive before that was repaired?
In terms of the pavement condition, probably, but it didn't, Crest had a lot of other issues in terms of sight distance and curves, whereas this is a fairly flat straight stretch of road. So it's not as, it's not as dangerous due to the condition of the pavement as the Crest roads were.
Yeah, it's kind of difficult to, I mean, I'm sure it probably needs to be, to be repaired, but if a lot of the residents don't want to pay for it, I don't know. It's kind of, it's kind of a tough one here. Thank you.
Chris.
Thank you. Yeah, this is a, this is a very interesting one, and what I'm trying to balance is kind of the community's interest versus the local neighborhood interest. I think those are really the competing elements here. And the question's kind of been asked is, if we don't do anything, what happens to this street? Close to the next five years, if we don't do it, what happens to this street? It doesn't change, but I mean, talk about the condition of the street.
Well, it'll, it'll continue to deteriorate. I mean, but it, but it's also in that group of 50 miles of unimproved streets that continue to deteriorate over time.
Right, right. But nothing that would be, and I'm hesitant to use the word, you know, like catastrophic or major, would just be the continued deterioration of the street over that period of time.
That's correct.
What's very persuasive to me are the number of remonstrance letters that have been sent in. While they don't technically represent remonstrances, they basically indicate what will happen, what will most likely happen. I don't expect necessarily any of these to fall off. So for me, if this were a major collector or something where the community's interest was at stake, the community uses this regularly, it's a street that's used by more than these neighbors, it has an arterial element to it, I might be more inclined to be willing to support continuing on with the project. But to me, it looks like a neighborhood street. It's serving these neighbors and really not much of anyone else. And so if you've got more than half the neighbors on this street saying, "I don't want this project," I gotta say, I'm inclined to say, "Okay, I'm willing to go along with that." If at some point in the future, they decide they want to have the project, it's taking into account that at some later date, it's going to be a more expensive project, but at least it will be on their terms and not forced on them. That's when you would, have those other three folks would be able to get their, you know, money into the, into the construction. So I'm not necessarily inclined to support it at this point, simply because I don't see this as having that great an impact on the community as a whole.
Can I just add a clarification? We would consider these remonstrances, so we wouldn't ask people to say no a second time. So we would carries, if we move forward, we would carry these 27.
Would be the ones that would go forward.
Right, right.
Then, then that makes my case even more, so I appreciate that, yeah.
George Polian.
Well, actually, this part of Jefferson Acres not only serves that one little stretch of neighborhood, but it also serves Sheldon High School, because there's a lot of parents that'll use that to drop their kids off and do the, cut through the back property. And, and kind of an answer to the question of what happens to the money, you know, Arcadia was the first upgrade or improve of an unimproved street that I dealt with when I first came on the council. It's been three times now that's come up for discussion and three times it's been voted down, so it still stays in the trans plan and it comes up again. It's just unfortunate that we have to spend as much time, effort, and money to get to a point where we can say yes or no on a project. I just wish there was some quicker way to do it. I appreciate all the work that Public Works has done on this. You know, like I said, this was in response to the trans plan and also a response to a couple of the people living on that street asking to, you know, "Let's move this project forward." But in the long run, like I said, I have to respect the will of the majority of the property owners, and that's, that's what's going to, you know, decide the way I vote on it.
Danny.
How much would the assessments go down if you eliminate one of the sidewalks?
We did, doing just a rough estimate, probably $900 a property, so they go down from $16,000 to fifteen, a little over $15,000.
Why is this more than the Crest assessments were?
Well, a couple of reasons. One, it's, we're later in time and, and we've, we've missed that sweet spot in the recession where construction prices were so good. If that's, hard to believe that. And the other is, on the, on the Crest project, if you recall, we had, because of the economy, we had, the money that we budgeted for the project ended up being substantially more than the bid prices that came in. So we, the council chose to use that difference to buy down the assessments on all three, Crest, Maple Elmira, and Chad Drive. So those, those don't reflect what the assessments would have been, the slide didn't reflect what they would have been without that additional buy down approved by the council.
Another question, do these people know that they can delay paying until the property changes hands?
Yes, one of the, one of the public meetings was about assessments and financing of assessments and the changes in the code that the council had approved.
Okay, well, I think we improved it, but I do think that really the whole city should pay for streets anywhere, but that's, we're a long ways from that, I think. So how about if you, how about if you eliminated both sidewalks?
Well, having, not done any design of that, but it's not going to, it's not going to be a significant change.
Okay, thank you.
So here we are. My sense around the table is we don't have enough votes to move forward, so I don't see a point in putting it out there unless you want to, George.
What I would suggest, though, you do have a different option for a motion that I would suggest then, right?
Right.
There's an option four. Because it would be, it would be helpful for us to have that and then we...
Have something additional.
Yeah, because then we won't spend additional dollars doing it, which we do appreciate that, so. I think option four was...
Decide not to make the improvement.
Yeah.
So you need a motion to that.
Yeah, if that's what your will is, then I would suggest that be done.
Decide not to make the improvement.
Yeah.
Right.
So I would suggest that as a motion.
The only comment I would make is at, when you get around to talking about what Mike has been asking and requesting that we talk about what to do with these unimproved streets. And I'm very in line with Alan was talking about, about the resources that we don't have. There may be a way that we want to approach these unimproved streets at a very different level than we do now, and that may end up being a way for us to at least do something. So, but I think that needs to be done, not in the context of one street, but in the context of all streets.
The city.
So we treat it fairly.
Right.
But I do think we need to be thinking out of the box on this so we can make some headway to keep some of these, these streets in decent usable condition, if not up to any city standard that we would like to have.
Okay.
Okay, you want to put the motion on the table?
It's option number four.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I move to not make the improvement, Jefferson Acres Road. Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. One.
I'm sorry, clarification.
All right.
That doesn't take it off the, off the trans plan.
No.
Okay.
All right, we ready to vote on that?
Well, shouldn't it say not to make the improvement at this time?
At this time.
At this time.
At this time.
So we're adding three words to this, at this time?
At this time.
Right, I think what that would mean is we would not do any more work to set up a LRD.
No.
But it would stay in trans plan someday.
Or future.
The cloud.
A miracle happened and the city won the lottery, we could change that.
Back to asking the question about at this time. All those in favor, please indicate. It's seven in favor and none in opposition, it passes. Thank you all very much. And we have a few moments left. Are you desirous of doing the consent calendar this time?
That's all we have.
We have the public forum.
And the pledge of allegiance. Happy to be in the consent round.
Okay. George, are you happy to do it now?
I'm sure.
Put it on the table.
I move to approve the consent calendar. Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion, none. All those in favor, please indicate.
Oh, hold.
Seven in favor and none in opposition.
Actually.
Oops.
Reconsider.
I think you're late.
I wanted to, sorry. I told you somebody was going to pull D.
I wanted to pull D. Sorry.
Go back and do something to undo the...
We'd like to discuss something instead of just...
Just pull it.
You could make a comment if you just wanted to make a comment.
Okay, so we're going to pull D and we're voting on the rest of it. I'm caught, all those in favor, please indicate. Seven in favor and none in opposition, it passes. Thank you. And George Polian, would you be with the party seeking?
Yes, ma'am.
So, ma'am, now you need to talk about D.
You need to do D before that.
Are we going to do, are we going to do D now or are we going to do D at the time?
We're doing the consent agenda right now, so.
Okay, all right. Are you, okay. I didn't know if you wanted it to do it before the whole...
So the question I have is how this proceeds forward. We really haven't had much of a conversation about the content of this particular ordinance, which doesn't have anything to do with content. And in particular, one of the things that I wanted to discuss was the size of the sign shall not exceed 12 square feet, which is basically four by three. And I wanted to have a conversation about that, whether that was the right, two of those, and whose property was the right size, or maybe something smaller, which would be more, I was thinking, maybe three by three or something like that, so that would be nine square feet. How does this process move forward and when do we have that conversation?
So if you vote on this tonight, then a public hearing will happen before the Planning Commission. You will then get a recommendation from the Planning Commission. The intent would then be to have a public hearing before the City Council, and then following the public hearing, depending on what your preference is, either schedule a work session with you after the public hearing, or schedule it for action and have the conversation there. But there will be several opportunities for the public to weigh in and for the council to have the conversation.
So how would we have the conversation be around, how would we interject that into this, so that we would have a conversation within the public hearing at both, and at the Planning Commission, and along the way, that we talk about, say, nine versus 12 square feet?
Well, the public can certainly talk about that issue when they see the proposal. If one of the things that you would like is to specifically call out that, when the AIS is prepared for the Planning Commission, that can certainly be one of the things that staff particularly identifies for both the public hearing before the Planning Commission and in the Planning Commission recommendation is, you know, the council hasn't decided that 12 square feet is the right square footage, so public, please weigh in on that. Planning Commission, please provide the council a particular recommendation on the square footage. If you would like, we could also schedule a work session following the Planning Commission recommendation before your public hearing, in case you want to have that conversation and then say, you know, what we really want the public hearing to be as part of our public hearing is the ordinance in general, but also public weigh-in on whether six square feet, nine square feet, 14 square feet is the right size. So we can just schedule a work session if, if you're interested.
The work session before the public hearing.
Before your public hearing. So the council, the Planning Commission would have public hearing, recommendation, we could then schedule a work session with the council before it goes for public hearing for you.
And, and the notion of what the right square feet would be identified as an issue for the, for the Planning Commission?
Sure.
To discuss.
Yep.
The other issue I've, I've heard about, and I don't know what happens right now. They were talking about the kind of signs where the, what is it, college students who paint houses, signs that get plopped.
College pro.
Everywhere.
No, the college pro.
Massively. What would that do to that?
This, none of these changes would allow that. If a property owner wanted to allow those folks to put a sign on their property and a property owner didn't already have two signs, the property could, owner could allow that to happen.
Or the property owner, as it does now, could just ignore that somebody stuck it on their property and do nothing?
Property owner could, but if that was the third sign on that piece of property and somebody made a complaint to the city, then the city would follow up with the property owner to say, "Hey, you have three signs, you're only allowed two," which might cause the property owner to take the sign down.
Okay.
And the public right of way is not affected? All that's still in effect?
Right, yeah. None of these changes affect that part.
Which, we don't seem to get many complaints about now?
One more comment was, in reading the Gard article today, there was some comment that our sign code was actually content-based, and I just wanted to correct that, if anybody had that impression, because our sign code, the way I read it and the way that it's interpreted, is not content-based. It's about location and size and it doesn't have anything to do with what it says on the sign.
What about the editorial?
I know the ACLU said something differently, but I didn't, I don't think that that's the case. I don't think our sign code ever had the intent to regulate content.
A long time ago, actually, it did, and the council made changes 15 or 20 years ago in order to, you know, like, for example, a real estate sign, that exemption, 20 years ago, it used to say, a sign could go up saying, "Your property's for sale." That language was changed, although there's still an exemption titled, "Real estate sign." If you look at the language, at the actual exemption, it says something more like, "If your property is for sale, you can put up a sign, not more than 14 square feet." It doesn't say the sign has to say, "Your property's for sale." The ACLU looked at the title, didn't look at the actual language of the exemption. When Jerry and I had the conversation with the ACLU, we kept saying, "Forget the title, look at what the exemption actually is. It is not content-based." The way we're proposing to make these changes, it removes any doubt as to whether this is content-based.
That's a good change, but I didn't think it'd regulate... That's a good change, but I didn't think it regulated content in the first place, but...
Okay, I think you're ready to vote on D. All those in favor, please indicate. Seven in favor and none in opposition, it passes. Thank you. So that leaves us with the flesh and the public forum for our meeting in just a few minutes.
Cool.
Business opportunity.